Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to April 20th, Monday, 7:00 PM's council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off and we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll have a moment of silence to be observed, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here. Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers comments? Are there any comments from the council this evening? Yes, Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everyone know that this afternoon at 4:00, seven Albion resident students were announced as Albion College's first class of Build Albion Fellows, and they are Marquis Boyd, Dominique Givens, Robbie Hayes, Mercedes Pace, Kalia Roberts, DeMarcus Robinson, and Cortezia Wilson. They will be embarking on this program at Albion College starting June 1, and will be working in our community on community revitalization projects. So if folks are interested in involving themselves with these fellows and with volunteers at the college, if they're interested and have projects for us to do, we welcome anyone getting in contact with me about that. I'll be leading the Build Albion Fellowship Program starting on June 1 for the following year or so. At the event that happened at the community school this afternoon, our mayor and a number of members of our council were in attendance, as were a great many people in the community and from the college, and I just wanted to thank everyone who showed up. Especially, I'd like to thank Mike Bierman, who is our school board president, is also our county commissioner, and there've been a lot of people who have been talking up this program for the six months since its inception, and I probably forgot to name a bunch of people at the event this afternoon, and for that, I apologize, but Mike, I want to thank you personally for that. Thank you, Mayor.
I would like to thank Albion College and Albion College students from the Energy and Sustainability Committee. They invited myself and our sustainability committee out, and they had a beautiful demonstration. I would like to emphasize, they are so intelligent. They took a jar of water from the nature center, they took a jar of water from the Albion Calumzoo River and the Calumzoo, Michigan, River, and they could see the difference in the quality of the water, also in green space, the decline in green space. And I just think that they're headed in the right place, and I just want to thank them.
Anyone else? I also have to commend the Albion Fellows Group. When we first started that, we were afraid we weren't going to get only but about one or two, but they're up to seven now, and I tell you, it really looks great. Albion College has stepped so far forward to help our kids in need to make sure that they get their education along with Jerry Lynn at the beginning, going to Marshall to finish up, and then going back to Albion College. I don't think you could ask for anything more community-wide than that right there within a 10-mile radius of Albion College. So they need to be commended, so we hope this program will kick off and do wonders for people that can't afford to go to college and get a four-year degree. If there is no else, we'll move on to presentations. We'll start with Calhoun County Health Department, Albion Clinic opening with Jim Rutherford. Please, step forward, please.
Thank you for the invite. I've met some of you, I haven't met all of you, but again, I'm Jim Rutherford, I'm the health officer with the Calhoun County Public Health Department. We have been working very diligently to expand our footprint in Albion in terms of public health. We've been working with City Manager Mitchell. I think we've had a very successful transition into the recycling program. Many of you had the opportunity to come to the open house. That is gangbusters right now, and we are excited about the number of participants that we're experiencing as a result of the modifications to the center, and look forward to continuing to work with the community. We've got a lot of volunteerism at the recycling center, working in unison with Albion College and some of the students there, as well as some of the community groups. So the other important news that I wanted to share with you was a notification that we are in the process of moving our office. For years, we have had an office on Albion Street, and it's kind of an isolated area, and we've had some limited resource or limited number of programs there, and we have been negotiating with Dr. Davins for the past too long, but we are at a point in time where we have signed a contract, a 10-year contract lease with Dr. Davins for his building that used to be the Albion Healthcare Clinic located on Michigan Avenue across from Big V Coffee. We're in the process of working on renovations for that facility. It's about 3,500 square feet. It allows us to expand some services within the community. I just jotted down a few things that we, you know, we currently do quite a bit, but obviously, our clinical services will continue, immunizations, our women, infant, and children, the WIC program will expand, school nursing, obviously, will continue, we'll be able to expand hearing and vision for both seniors and for adolescents and children, sexually transmitted infections, sexually transmitted disease, and then some of the new initiatives will involve family planning, which has not been really available, readily available in Albion, particularly since Planned Parenthood has moved out of the area, and even with Planned Parenthood here, they didn't really reach out to Albion. And then ultimately, we'll be looking at some primary care opportunities for the community and for residents as well. Even though we have the Affordable Care Act, we are still experiencing a significant amount of residents, a lot in Albion, that are falling through the cracks and that can't afford the premiums that are required under Affordable Care Act policies, most of which are somewhat still cumbersome with very high deductibles. So we're always going to have a segment of the population that still require primary care access. We still have a lot of students in Albion that don't have regular access to a primary care physician, and that's a reality that we deal with, but these are things that we need to address, and looking forward to this as kind of an opportunity to help facilitate that. So that's all I've got, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Andy?
When do you anticipate the move to be completed, when you'll be open?
We are in the process of renovations now. It is April 20th. I would anticipate that we're probably another four weeks out.
Okay. Thank you.
So it sounds like from what you're saying that you've been negotiating for that for a while. Was there a reason why behind Superior Street, there's the former health center, was there a reason why that wasn't left at, or?
Well, we've been kind of limited with space. We've been limited with fiscal resources. We've been able to garner some grants that allow us to expand services, family planning being one of those. The family planning program is an example of a program that has been available in Calhoun County, but not really readily available for Albion, and you, we used to have the Federal Qualified Health Center, you used to have the Family Health Center here, and that pretty much shut down other than dental probably two, two and a half years ago. And the reality is, is we've, all along, have indicated, you can't expect residents to have to drive 52 miles round trip for primary care. It's just not fair, it's not equitable. So these are, you know, I am not ready to say, I'm putting in an FQHC here, but I am ready to say, we're expanding our services.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Jim, is there anything that we can do to help advertise the availability of these services once you're up and running?
We have a marketing plan that we've developed that I'll bounce off of you in the next week or so when we're ready, and then the open house to get the advertising out. Albion's a little bit more challenging, and the methods that we use for getting the word out are going to have to be a little bit more homegrown and local, so we'll certainly take advantage of that offering.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, I had one, too. As far as primary care, are you saying that you're going to bring doctors in, or is it going to be segmented type things, like you'll do family planning, you'll do STD testing, or are you going to, is it going to be like your hometown family doctor type situation?
I can't commit to that level of care at this point in time. You will see a nurse practitioner.
Okay.
Available, particularly for the family planning program. It could grow from there. I know that we've, you know, we've had some conversations with Oakland Hospital, we've had conversations with Allegiance. The square footage allows me to really expand our services for the community. We're going from two exam rooms to six exam rooms, so it's wide open. Whether or not this evolves into a look-alike FQHC, it's still, but we're, that's, you know, that's where we want to go.
But that is, that is a real possibility at some point.
Definitely, certainly within the next year.
Okay.
Arbor Day proclamation, I see nobody's here to accept that, so it's our proclamation we do every year to remain tree-wise and tree-savvy. I do believe it's April 23rd or 4th, I haven't heard of anything going on at this point in time, so I will keep you notified of that, so.
April 25th. April 25th is our.
Is it?
Arbor Day. Yep.
C., Transform Your Home with Krista Edwards, please.
Good evening. My name is Krista Edwards, and the director of the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority.
Krista, if you can, pull that mic right around.
Is that better?
Yep.
I could actually just stand over here, maybe.
Wait. Wait a second. Tosh, leaving him. There we go.
Great. Actually, I prepared a presentation that is an overview of the land bank authority, as well as Transform This Home, some of the grants that we have going on in the city of Albion, and some new programs that we've started. I know some of you have heard me speak before, some of you have probably seen Amy Rose Wallace Robinson out at the town hall meeting, so you've probably gotten a little bit of this information, but we have a lot going on, and we're partnering with the city of Albion in a couple of different ways, so we wanted to come and let you know what's taking place. So today, we'll go over, like I said, the grant, the programs, some projects that we've done in Albion, and then some of our partnerships. Our land bank was created in 2006 for quite a long time. We just held property until the neighborhood stabilization program came along in the city of Albion, or, sorry, in the city of Battle Creek, and that's the grant that I came to work on, and really, we grew from there because we acquired a lot of grant management skills and grant writing skills, and so we've been putting those to good use in the last couple of years. We have a seven-member Board of Directors. The county treasurer always serves as our board chair. We have two representatives from the city of Albion right now. One is required, we have a city of Albion representative, that's Peggy Sint, and then we also have an at-large representative who's new this year, it's Patrick McLean with the Ford Institute and Albion College. We also have a representative from the Board of Commissioners, the city of Battle Creek, and then a township representative and one other at-large. So of course, our board creates our policies and procedures, and then are implemented by staff. We have myself, Amy Rose, and then Angela Hardtong. Both Amy and Angela were added last year, so we've really increased our capacity and our ability to be able to reach out to communities in which we own properties. And you can see, we have a whole list of responsibilities, and it can change every day and be something new every day. What we're really going to talk about today is maintaining properties, grant management, blight, and then our programs. So we spend a lot of time maintaining properties. Properties come to us through the tax foreclosure process most often. They're usually unwanted, vacant, and have a lot of problems. You can see the beautiful one right up there in the corner is Union Steel. Does anybody want to buy a factory? So that is, that's a big problem, and, you know, one of my jobs is to figure out how we can try and tackle it. And I have identified one grant, but it requires a 25% local match, which is a very steep price tag, but it's the only thing I've found so far, and we've talked with EPA, we've talked with DEQ, we've talked with MEDC, so we're really looking for a way to tackle that, you know, take care of that safety issue. We also know there's probably a lot of environmental things going on there, so we have to be, have to be conscious of that as well. We have properties that just have trash dumped on them, we have this one down here in the corner is actually on our grant to demolish, but part of the porch collapsed, and then we often see those danger unfit for human occupancy signs that John Tracy likes to post on buildings and let us know that there's a problem. So we get all kinds of properties, and when we get them, we say, okay, what are we going to do with them? Sometimes they might require an environmental cleanup, and if we're lucky, DEQ will come in and do that for us. The one up there in the corner is the old gas station on Michigan that became the Pocket Park, and they're currently doing some work out on Harvard Industry Site with the Quench Oil Plume, and they're going to be, they tested last year, found some contamination, and they're coming back to do some remediation out there. The Takes a Vision is the old Austin School, you know, that's another one, it's got historic characteristics. I took SHIPA, which is the State Historic Preservation Office by there, but, you know, it's kind of like, what can we do, and how can you find the financing? We also do demolitions, and we just started a very new rehabilitation, Transform This Home thing this year. And then, of course, we do long-term maintenance, so we mow a lot of properties. Sometimes it goes really well, sometimes we have contractor failure like last year. So we do all of that. We have 46% of our 140 properties in the city of Albion are residential, which means they have structures. Almost half of those are coming down in the upcoming grant. The next biggest portion of our properties are just vacant lots, which need that long-term maintenance until we can find a buyer. So when we get to this stage, we occasionally need more information. I would say we probably often need more information, either it's structurally from the building side, or maybe we just, we need more information about what would work in your community. I think all of you were probably invited and participated in the target market interviews. Okay, so that grant is almost, or that study is almost done, we'll be coming back probably in early June, late May to do another public presentation, and, you know, that was a partnership between Albion, Battle Creek, and then myself, the land bank, and the county treasurer to write that grant and get that grant funding in. And it's really important because it identifies new housing options, so MISTDA, which is the State Historic Development Agency, is really pushing upper-story apartments in the downtown, and then different type of townhome uses and things like that that would attract new residents to the areas. So it identifies that, but it also tells you how much your market can absorb each year, so that's very important to developers because it helps them understand what would be successful. And then it identifies potential residents, either residents coming in from outside the county or moving around within the county. So it opens up some new doors to developers on who they could market a new project to. And then another thing it does is it opens potential access to additional funding. Once you have that target market, it's like a feather in your cap, it's important to MISTDA, it's important to MEDC, so if you're putting a project together, you have some data to support that grant request. And then, of course, we hope it results in some new housing for your community. Our other big initiative in the city of Albion has been blight removal. The treasurer and the land bank since 2008 have demolished probably 30, 35 homes with our own funding, which is a great way to do it, but it's better if you can get a grant because it helps you save, save money. And so last year, we did an application with the city, an Emmett Township, and the treasurer and the land bank, and we received funding to tear down 32 homes in the city of Albion, and then there are two homes in Emmett Township that we're also going to demolish. We've just awarded our contract for asbestos assessment, so you'll start seeing contractors out here, and for asbestos abatement just in the last couple of weeks, but we really were targeting buildings that were along corridors, dangerous buildings, clusters of blight. So you can see, we have a couple on Ionia Street, we have a couple on Center Street, which is a real cluster right there, and then we have some in Jefferson. And what we did is we said, okay, city of Albion, we own all these structures, these qualify for the grant, how do we prioritize them, you know, what, you know, what do you get complaints about, what are dangerous buildings, and let's work through this and figure out how we can do it. So we don't make the decisions in a vacuum by ourselves, we always talk with the local units to find out what their input is and what they know about these structures. So the Transform This Home program is brand spanking new. It's for those houses that really could be saved from demolition, and maybe we could get them back on the tax roll. So what we're doing is, we're, Amy Rose has actually been spending all winter in the cold going out to all of our properties and doing an inventory and saying, okay, this one needs demolished, this one we think we could rehab or get it into Transform This Home. We don't have all the money to do it, so we're trying to find people who are interested in that labor of love project. So they would contact a realtor, and we would have them go in with the code official and the building official and find out what needs to happen, and then they could seek financing. We've met with Fifth Third, there's a 203K loan, which allows you to purchase a property and then do some of the rehabs if the numbers work out. So we've got that contact now that we can pass on, on to people, and, you know, they might be able to fund it themselves as well. We just want to know that they can fund it and they have a plan, so that rehab would have to be done within nine months, and they would have to show us that they're doing it. In the past, we sold properties and people had plans and they just didn't finish them, and so we wanted, we were trying to find a way to make people accountable, but also work with them for some of the interesting characteristics that are going on with the properties. So you can see here at the bottom that if they don't carry through with their plan, they would get reconveyed to the land bank. So there is, there is a hook, they really need to follow through with their plan, and this is based on something that the Detroit Land Bank is trying, and it's a pilot, so we're very open to seeing how it works and if we need to adjust. So that takes care of our residential structures, which, oh, this is just an example, this is from Battle Creek because it's so new, we have one going on here, and we have another one, we're getting started, but this just shows you, we did some work in this property, we're getting the electrics on, and we're saying, okay, these are what, this is what you're going to need to do. So I just wanted to show you an example of a house that would be in this program. So our vacant properties, we have a lot of vacant properties, 55 in the city of Albion. This is our side lot program, been around for a long time, and we've been promoting it, so we've been getting a few more sales. We look for adjacent owner-occupied residential houses that are adjacent to the properties. We sell them for $210, typically through a quit claim, if they want a warranty deed with title insurance, we'll investigate that and get that put together, but we'll pass on that cost. We make sure that the applicants are owners or have a land contract, that they're current on their taxes, and that they are not in trouble with local code compliance. So if somebody has a long history of co-compliance, they wouldn't qualify for a side lot. We've had built garages, we've had them put up fences and expand their yards. This is one in the city of Battle Creek, it's just so amazing, I like to show this. If you watch the red barn over on the left, we tore down these two houses, the salmon-colored one had a fire and it had damaged the house next door. So the first year, we sold him the first lot with the little wheels on it, and he did some landscaping, and I went by last summer and he had put in this entire garden, and so it completely changed that streetscape. And that's what we like to see, although you don't have to be a master gardener to buy a side lot. You know, like I said, we have, we've had garages built and all kinds of things. So finally, we get to our neighborhood mowing maintenance, and this program is available for 2016. We do have it going on this year, it's the first year, the pilot year, and we did some outreach in the city of Albion, but we didn't get any bites, so we're going to have to rethink how we do outreach in the city of Albion. We did some mailings and a press release, and we had a couple of calls, and we extended the deadlines, but it just, it didn't work. So we have six going on in Battle Creek, and it's really a stipend. If you, if your organization, your nonprofit, your neighborhood group, your church, your baseball team, your women's, your women's group, those are all people who have applied, you get $3,000 for mowing 20 vacant lots for one, one summer, basically. So it's a minimum of 10 mows, we expect you to mow every three weeks. We would give a small, we give like 10% at the beginning of the season if you want some seed money to buy gas and things like that. And so we also require that you have general liability insurance on your group and that you have a group bank account, because we can't, we can't fund individuals, you know, we have to make sure that you're a group. So this is our first year for this. Again, it's something that's been successful in another Michigan community, and we wanted to bring it here and put some money back into neighborhood organizations or community groups so that they could do projects within their own areas where they're located. So these are a couple of projects that happened in the city of Albion that were not in one of those programs, that just kind of created because the right people were in the right places at the right time. Little Williams of Jesus Daycare Center, that came through tax foreclosure, and the church was interested in purchasing it, only they didn't realize it was coming into tax foreclosure, and so the land bank was able to step in and purchase that property and cleanse all of the title work. There was a lot of title issues, and so that's one of the things that we can do, we can hold a property and get that title cleaned, and then the church was able to get all of the code and all the building stuff going on. We leased it to them until we were able to take care of all the problems, and then we ultimately transferred it to them. And then the Pocket Park, it's probably my favorite project we've done in a while, A, because I wanted to do a Pocket Park, and B, there were so many people that were involved. The county treasurer foreclosed on it, transferred it to the land bank. We held it for a couple of years until DEQ could come in, and then the city and Albion College stepped up and said, let's create this park, let's try and create the space between the college and the downtown, and I think it really works. And I know that Steve Bukama from DEQ wants to come back and take pictures of everyone. So DEQ is also excited about it. It's not just me. So I think that's just a great example of what can happen when everybody pulls together, because it couldn't have been done without all those players. So as I've mentioned throughout this whole thing, we write grants with other municipalities, we, you know, we pull in things wherever we can find them to make things work, and these are just a list, and I probably forgot somebody, of organizations and municipalities that we've partnered with over the years, and, you know, what we think that we can bring is just that collaborative spirit and that way of finding things, finding, finding unique ways to make things work. So that's it. If you have any questions, it was a lot of information, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Yes?
And do you see starting the demolition type?
Well, we'll be starting the asbestos assessments in May, and abatements probably in May also, and I would expect demolitions to be happening over the summer. That grant runs, I think, until June 2016, so we have some time.
So you've started here.
Yeah, we have some grant funding in Battle Creek that has to be used first, so we're staggering those, but we do need to get spending that money, and we want to get those properties down. What I think might happen is we might get the majority of the buildings down by the end of the year, and we may have site restoration that we're doing next spring. It works better in the spring and not in the winter, so that's kind of what I'm thinking will happen.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What size does the lot, the lot next to you have to be?
Our policies say if it's 10,000 square feet or less, it's a side lot. Now, if it's over 10,000 square feet, we start at market value, which is based on what the assessor tells us, and we kind of barter until we get to a price that works. You know, it's important for us to get those properties to somebody who's going to care for it because it gets it back on the tax roll and it makes it a usable property again.
That's what I was thinking, you know, because I talked with someone from your office, and they were saying, were saying that they think that the lot that I'm talking about is bigger than 10,000 square feet, but it's just sitting there.
Yeah, we, you know, when you do policies, you have to, we actually just increased it, it used to be 8,000 square feet, and we just increased it in February to 10,000. You kind of have to have a cutoff, but we know that the lots only have so much value, and they're most valuable to the people next door, so.
I'm taking a class in Jewing, so I will be called.
Definitely. Did you speak with Amy Rose? Did you speak with Amy Rose?
Pardon me?
Did you speak with Amy Rose about it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I'll follow up with her, and we'll see. Yep, I mean, what we do is we ask the city assessor, how much do you think this is worth? And then we throw it out there, and the person on the other side says, I would, I want to pay this much, and, you know, we kind of come to an agreement.
And see, that's what I was telling her, the property on the side of me is going to be torn down. Then there's an empty property on the side of that, then the property next to that, nobody's living there. I mean, it's been like that for years since the owner died, so. And so you've got one, two, three properties there that's.
So you just want to put a fence around them and own them? All right. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you just want to put a fence around them and own them? All right. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a resolution of appreciation for Elaine Lurkey. If you would come forward, please. Resolution of appreciation for Elaine Lurkey, April 22nd, 2015. Whereas Elaine was hired by the city of Albion in November 2000 as a PPO coordinator. And whereas during budget cuts for fiscal year 2008, Elaine's position with the city was eliminated. Fortunately, she was employed by Safe Place and allowed to remain working out of Albion Department of Public Safety. And whereas Elaine has spent 15 years working in domestic violence and has positively affected the lives of many Albion area victims and their children. Whereas her presence will be missed by those who work with her along with those families in need. And whereas the city of Albion has been fortunate to have had Elaine as a member of its family. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Albion extends its best wishes to Elaine Lurkey for a full and joyous retirement. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and no more than five minutes. Property form is required. Are there any citizens' comments on the agenda this evening? Okay, consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes from April 6th, 2015.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? See none? Voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Thank you. Items for individual discussion. Update on Holland Park. Councilman Reed, council member Reed.
We're still working on Holland Park. We have our donations. We have some private donations, but our major ones come from fire keepers, $35,000. Community foundation, $20,000. And philanthropic women's group has given us $8,000 so far. We're putting in the whole section, the top section of the park, the, the little kids' section. It's going to be put in hopefully on June 15th. Whenever we have the build with the Presbyterian Church, we're going to put in the whole children's section. We're still fundraising to get the monies to do the middle section, which will be the, the seniors and the teens. And that's looking good right now. I don't know if we're going to be able to get it done in by the 15th, get it all set up by the 15th, but if not, hopefully this summer. We're going to be for Arbor Day, our Commonwealth is coming out to the park and we're going to clean down along the, the river. And, and get all the leaves and trash and stuff out behind the ballpark at the bottom. And so we're going to get all of that cleaned out and not going to do too much more before the build because we know we'll have trucks and things moving out there. But we're getting all set up. We're doing some landscaping, planting some flowers and, and things just as soon as that's finished.
Good.
Great.
Any questions?
Coming along. Oh, anybody who has any donations that they would like to send in can send them into the city of Albion to Mrs. Mitchell's office and earmark them for Holland Park. And we thank you.
Thank you. B, request approval for gaming license for St. James Church.
So moved.
Support.
What gaming are they going to do?
So, yeah, I mean, we got a blank application, so.
Yeah. I think we neglected to include their actual application. Jill, do you recall the date they were asking for the bingo license date?
It's for May. It's in May they're doing it.
What are they doing?
Do you know what they're doing?
Bingo.
Oh, bingo.
Bingo.
Oh, here we go.
My name's Paula McCruff and I represent the St. James. Any questions? It's a one event, special event bingo for May.
Great.
And we've sent all our documents to the state. We just need this one last final form.
Sweet.
From the local government.
Sounds good.
When in May?
May 7th.
Just I know where to go.
Are there any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a roll call votes resolution.
Am I clear? Am I clear on agenda one? I thought they were all marked.
We got a vote.
Yes, I know. Request for approval of gaming license for St. James Church. Is that going to be a roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call, please. Vote.
Councilmember Brown.
Uh, yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Thank you. I must have threw the other agenda off. This one's not first. Well, I know I had the other one. There'll be a slight delay here. Thank you. Request for approval of criminal background check policy.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and support. Questions?
Mr. Berry, if you recall, I'm at the last, well, two council sessions ago, I had presented the proposed policy to you. And councilmembers had expressed some interest in having an opportunity to have an appeal process essentially for individuals who may have had some incidents in their past. So this new process would allow them within 14 days to appeal if their decision was indicating that they did not qualify based on our standard criteria. And in those circumstances, they would appeal to me as the city manager. The appeal process would include three letters of recommendation with only one of those being from a relative. And we would take into consideration how they have rehabilitated themselves essentially in the most recent years.
Okay. Any further, yes, Andy?
And we're changing the wording, right? We're moving the word criminal from this and we're just saying city of Albion background screening policy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Cheryl.
I just had a question. Under felonies, it says violent. And we have a definition from the city attorney, what aggravated versus felonious means.
Aggravated assault is a, is an assault that causes injury to a, to an individual. It's a one-year misdemeanor in the state of Michigan, whereas felonious assault, it's usually an assault that involves some sort of a weapon, something above aggravated assault, but below assault causing great bodily harm less than murder. Felonious assault is a five-year felony.
Thank you. One other thing.
Yes.
Just for the, for our viewing public, about the sex offenses, that was the one concern that I heard a lot about. So would, would you be so kind as to read that section of the background check?
Under the violent section, some section?
Under what is, what sex offenses, what we would do with sex offenses?
It says all sex offenses. Which one?
Yeah.
Okay. All sex offenses regardless of the amount of time since offense. Examples include criminal sexual conduct, first, second, third, or fourth degree, sodomy, prostitution, solicitation, indecent exposure, et cetera.
People were concerned that we might make an allowance for some of that and that's where I was getting my concerns.
Okay. Any further?
Basically, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
But basically, any of those things could be appealed. I mean, not that you'd want.
Right.
Yeah.
And I just want to reiterate, our primary concern is the safety of especially the children that our employees may be exposed to, but if any resident or even the coworkers. But we do want to be reasonable and taking into consideration such things as the person's age at the time of the offense. For example, may be on the list of sexual offenders and may have both been teenagers. So there might be some extenuating circumstances and we just want to be reasonable when people are trying to rehabilitate their lives and want to get back to the community.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Roll call what?
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. B, first reading a request approval ordinance of 2015-01. An ordinance to admit, amend Chapter 58, Article 6658, 168 of the City of Albion Code of Ordinances to allow alcohol beverages to be sold, consumed, or possessed in public during.
Sanctioned.
Sanctioned events.
Sense.
Sanctioned.
Sanctioned.
Sanctioned events?
That means we approved it.
Supported by us.
Supported by us.
In specified areas. Okay.
So, yeah, so you can just support just to discuss it, so.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Question?
Next question.
Yes, Cheryl.
Um, I guess my, my first question is, how did we come about wanting to do this? Is it because we wanted to start having beer tents or something? I mean, in all honesty, with all the craft brew that's going on in the state of Michigan and as exciting as it all is for other cities, I question whether it's exciting for this city.
The, it's my understanding that a group had approached the manager wanting to have a, a tent of sort of a, they wanted to have an event where they could serve alcohol. And because of our present ordinances which prohibit that, the manager had asked me to craft an ordinance that, that would allow groups with, meeting certain criteria and having city approval and meeting state criteria and things of that nature. So that, that they could do that. Certainly, other municipalities have very similar ordinances to this. Pretty much any municipality that has outdoor celebrations has, has some derivation of this ordinance.
And if I could just add, this, we received a request for during the month of May and they wanted to have a, an activity which included having alcoholic beverages at the Wood Victory Park. However, our court, current ordinance only allows for it during the Festival of the Forks. So as we were looking at, could it be available any other time of the year? It only also made sense to see if, if there were other locations that could be taken into consideration that could be secured that would also allow it. Because I had spoken with, with the chamber specifically and they were interested in having perhaps a beer tent along one of the side streets, but not necessarily right at Victory Park during some of their activities. So we wanted to see if we can accommodate that in a reasonable fashion, which would include, we received feedback from Chief Scott as well as from our code enforcement. To get some indication of what we can do in a reasonable way that would make these available to people, but that we can also have control over what was happening during those festivities and those types of assumptions.
Yes, Cheryl.
Well, one of the things that concerns me, and when we passed the Victory Park thing, I think I was probably one of the dissenters. But one of the things that always concerns me is the fact that at that event, they decided that they would have a limit on the number of drinks you could buy. It always concerns me that people that have no training in serving. And when we define, there is no definition of what an organization is. And there's no definition in here of what a well-organized event is, which is the findings and purpose, up in the findings and purpose. Both of those things concern me because that leaves us a huge loophole. The other thing that concerns me is there's no training required for any of this. So, and since we haven't got a number that, of beers or whatever you can buy, I mean, even the tigers, you can't buy more than two at a time. That bothers me because without any kind of training, people will continue to sell and to buy. And so those are my concerns. I have a real, real difficult time with allowing alcohol out in public in this type of thing. I've been in other towns that have done it. I've seen some really good outcomes and I've also seen some bad ones. So that's where my concern is.
Joe. Yes, go ahead.
Councilwoman Kraus, I have to apologize. I've gone through so many different versions of this ordinance when we spoke before council meeting. In paragraph H, I, I did integrate a requirement that the applicant provide verification of completion of the responsible alcohol service program. For each individual that will be serving alcohol.
I missed that, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No, I missed it as well, so. And I wrote it.
Maurice?
Um, my concern is one of fairness. You know, we did approve for alcohol to be served in the boma in certain situations and certain different events, which is inside. I understand that. But that was to help the sustainability of it. It was so they could have, let's say, reunions or just different events. If we're going to be a progressive city, we do need to check with our police chief to see how he feels, what the experiences he's networked with other agencies. However, our public should have the right and privilege to have festivals. Under this ordinance, the basis seemed to be covered. I really concur with Councilwoman Kraus to a degree that if we dot our i's and cross our t's in those situations she's concerned with, we should move forward. And invite a brighter horizon in Albion. I mean, I think that our department is capable of controlling any type of activity and we're intelligent enough to put the ordinance in place where it would have to be followed to the letter of the law. So I would like to see it approved.
Lynn?
I didn't see anywhere in here where it had a beach limit for children that could be involved, be there. I, you know, I figure what people do on their own property is none of our business if they want to drink there. But when it comes to public property that I'm paying taxes on just as well as everybody else, I think children should always be protected from that. I mean, after all, we tell them one thing and we show them something else. It's just not a good practice.
Well, I guess to address that, just for sake of, of, I mean, I, I could, I could draft the ordinance until we're, we're blue and basically 10 pages long. But for that particular concern that you have, Councilwoman Reed, there is actually a requirement that the Michigan Liquor Control Commission requires that it be a fest area, a specific area. And there needs to be people monitoring to, to ensure that individuals that are not of age are not in, within the consumption area. And then, so it wasn't put in the ordinance because I felt it would be redundant because it's already addressed at the state, as part of the state licensing requirement.
So.
Yes, Carol.
So, so let's say you wanted, someone wanted to have a, a sanction event in Victory Park. So would they be responsible for putting up fences in the park? Okay, and so what is, I mean, so does that do anything to, I guess, to the, like, you know, there's, there's a... If you like harmed the landscape, I'll put it that way, like what?
Let me tell you how this has been done. I mean, I can give you an example. I was telling Councilwoman Kraus before the meeting how, I'll just use Meridian Township as an example. They have a festival they call Celebrate Downtown Oak Miss. They have an enclosed area that's enclosed by fence. We're not talking about. They have an enclosed area that's enclosed by fence, we're not talking about permanent chain link fence, we're talking about like that orange construction fence. They have metal stakes set in cement that they just set on the concrete, do a loop around and do the enclosed area, so it's totally removable, doesn't hurt the area, but it does prevent people from being, you know, they can only come in and out of one location so that it can be regulated to make sure, you know, IDs are getting checked and, and things of that nature.
So, one, so if, and I think that they've already had one, but if the, like, the sister city committee had like a farmer's market and they wanted to sell wine or serve wine or something in Stoffler Plaza, this, that would fall into this?
Well, we've got a, there's, there's a distinction between selling alcohol like, like as if it was a bottle of wine or, and serving alcohol.
Okay.
There, there are two different things there. This, this is, is, the idea here is you're serving glasses of beer or glasses of wine. So I, I think the, it's a little bit different concept in, as it relates to a farmer's market.
What if we were going to have an event in Stoffler Plaza in conjunction with a farmer's market day and someone wanted to sell glasses of wine, they would have to fence in an area that would be separate from the farmer's market where other people who are not interested in buying wine would not be in the, would not have it in their face?
And what the council should really keep in mind here is there's really a twofold control that the city has on these types of events. One is, when somebody applies to do this under the ordinance, it has to be looked at by the chief, it has to be looked at by our code enforcement officer, and then approval is ultimately with the city manager. Now, on top of that, in order to serve pursuant to state regulation, they have to get approved by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, which means they again have to get the approval of the chief, they have to get approval from any churches or schools that are within a certain distance, and then they have to get the approval of the local governing body to, you know, have the event.
So, just a question, just to mix it up here, so I bought a side lot near my, you know, my home somewhere, it had a big piece of land and I wanted to have a.
It's private property, doesn't apply.
Okay.
But, okay, yeah, okay.
That's why I meant, what does sanction events mean?
Whatever the city manager and the, well, in this case, the ordinance.
Agreed.
Is approval by the city, so whatever the, the chief and the code enforcement and the city manager deem is appropriate and not contrary to the health, safety, and welfare of the public.
My interpretation of that is, it's actually a, an event, such as Festival of the Forks, it's not five people getting together and saying, okay, let's close down our block so, you know, we can have a party. It is actually an event that's sponsored by a group, probably a nonprofit organization, but at least by an officially recognized organization. And ultimately, this, this is probably stricter than what we already have for Victory Park, but it just became clear that there are some organizations that would like to have a similar activity that they can have at Victory Park, but what if they want to have it at Rieger Park? We don't have anything that allows that. What if they want to have it at any other occasion other than the weekend of Festival of the Forks? We don't have anything that allows, so this just allows some additional flexibility. And Colin, I don't recall if we actually included a requirement for them retaining public safety officers, or if that was an operational.
I don't think that made it in. You, you're talking about paying for police presence?
Yes.
I don't think that made it in.
Okay.
I figured we'd just take it rather than the chief's salary.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
As long as we're on that subject, can we get Chief Kipps' input on this?
Okay, ask one question before he comes up.
Pardon?
Ask one question before he comes up. This, this, this permit fee would be on top of the fee for renting the park, right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Oh, 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 oh. You mean to tell me you're going to give Victory Park to them for $40? They're going to have the whole park?
No, 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 it's separate.
No, no, no.
Separate from.
I was going to say.
That's what we said, separate.
But, I mean.
There better be a restricted area where they have to confine this.
Right, yeah, of course, yeah, yeah.
I discussed this with the city manager, my request was that there would be some stipulations and therefore paying for public safety officers to be there, so there's a requirement of two public safety officers to be at these events and it's paid for by, the overtime is paid for by the event, so that was my concern with it.
That's, I, because I know that right now, we probably don't have a whole lot of public safety officers running around off duty, but.
Right.
So I didn't want to, you know, crunch you guys too tight either. So, but you're okay with this then, Chief?
As far as I know, I mean, a lot of other communities do the same thing, so.
Yeah, I know, oh, I know. Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Yes?
Just one question, so in, this, no events would take place on Sundays, right? If we, because I remember there was, there was like a thing we, that came to us from the state and we had to either change it or leave it alone.
It was for sale of liquor on Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's sale of liquor. So we'd have to be in compliance, right? That's a state mandate, not a city mandate, so.
Well.
But is this fault, you're saying they're not selling, you're just distributing or just?
If I'm not mistaken, it was no liquor sales before noon, but we could amend that so that we could in the city.
Right.
But we chose not to.
Correct.
That's correct, right.
Probably, no, you couldn't do it in, in the morning.
Right.
I voted yes.
Yeah.
I guess I just don't, what is the big gink about it? We haven't had it this long, why do we care if we have it anymore?
Yeah, I, I can see that the business opportunity, right? So we have, we have a, we have a one-time, only at the Festival of the Forks, where at Victory Park, alcohol can be served in a designated area. But you could imagine, you know, large reunion organizations or an alumni group at the college who would want to have a public, you know, the, the numbers would make it so that there's, there's no place to have it indoors in Albion, and so they'd want to have it outdoors, out of doors. And so, that, that's, I think, is the only, the only thing that I could see as the positive. I mean, I don't think it's going to happen that often. I think our city attorney has done some due diligence in terms of finding other municipalities examples of how, how it's done. I'm not, I'm not sure it's something that we need to be doing, but I can sort of understand the motivation. Trying to make, try to make your community as flexible and open to possibilities as possible, as long as we are protected, then that's the motivation.
There's open see, right downtown, they're called local bars.
Right, but if you have 300 people coming for an event, and they go, the bar is not an option.
I know. Yes, Maurice?
A lot of times when you have things like this, people don't always purchase, they sometimes.
Right, no, no, that, no, I hear you, I hear you, no, I hear you. Or come already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that, that would be a concern.
Yes, Maurice?
Um, as far as the event situation, I, I think that we still have the power of selection. We always have the, the right to deny based on, we don't feel you're a legitimate organization, there's no precedent in your application, and we just, we deny it. Also, a lot of people are not going to want to pay the price to have public safety, so we have some checks and balances within this. My final statement is, do we need to wait and go back to the drawing board and, and answer some of our own questions through the city attorney and the city manager?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, I, I like to call, call a, a point.
One additional question, so if, if a group is sponsoring it and, you know, let's say they're just, they're giving out alcohol, I mean, is, are group members allowed, like, I mean, can they purchase it from, like, can the group, like, sell to their own members? Like, is that?
Could the group sell to their, yeah. I mean, I can tell you, I mean, traditionally how this has worked in the past is, I don't know, just give you examples of the municipal events I've been to, is usually they sell tickets to whomever, whether it's their own group or members of the public that are coming and they check IDs and, yeah, I mean, they can sell to anybody that meets.
Okay.
You know, the Adrian firms. The one thing that I, that I, as I said before, that did not make an amendment, I can certainly integrate is the paying for the public safety overdrafters. What I would, what I would do is just add a, a paragraph that says that the group is responsible for any overtime incurred as required by police presence or something to that effect.
Yes.
Point of order, call to question. Need a double on it. Call to question.
You need to vote for that.
Whoa. Are there any more questions?
No more questions, but I still think that if you want to drink, you should drink at your private place, not.
Okay.
When I, when I make point of order or call a question, we're supposed to address that before any more discussion goes. That's the rules. But I, that's the rules, period.
I, I think the, that motion was used before, but I think you need to have a.
Point of order means what it means. Now call the question, you can go to a vote. It's in the rules, that's our rules.
That is the rules. But we call that, we call the question, we have to vote on whether we call the question.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I was saying, yeah, you can't stop.
So.
Councilmember Kraus?
No.
French?
No.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
No.
So any other questions?
At the ball's said and done, there's nothing else to say to do, it's done with it, it didn't pass.
No, that was the vote to call the question, that was not the vote on the, on resolution.
Okay, that wasn't clear.
Oh, it's a vote on calling the question, it's the vote on calling the question, because other people might have had questions.
Oh, yes, I'll say no on that, yeah.
So, doesn't matter, did not.
Yeah, right. That wasn't clear, but.
We can go ahead and vote, Mayor.
You, you were going to ask a question before Councilman Barnes asked you to ask the question be called, so do you, have you had your questions answered?
Yeah, that was my last question with Colin with the selling.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to call the question, that was unclear.
Well, that's why I say, I think everybody was unclear on what they were voting for.
I knew exactly what we were voting for.
I got it.
We've been here before. So now we're going to vote on the resolution. Can I?
Yes.
Can I make the fence, just so we clear, so we're clear, that we are going to make the friendly amendment that overtime for two police officers will be incurred as part of the application process, just in case it passes. So we get the thing that we.
So you're making, you're forcing me to ask a question, so discussion's still going, right?
That's right, oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. So, I mean, when I, when I, when I think about it, I mean, it does make, what it's saying right now is we have it where this can happen in Victory Park, but it doesn't happen in any other parks. So it really.
This thing ordinance happens one day a year.
Yeah.
In Victory Park, not, not Fourth of July celebration.
Yeah.
Not, just.
I, I think it's more about just giving us wiggle room versus, because we still can say no to everyone.
We could.
Yeah. And it's not that, I'm assuming that the city is not receiving a boatload of these kinds of applications.
Not at the present time, and it was anticipated that there would be more, no more than four occasions that would be permitted, no matter what. Also, if, if it will make you more comfortable, instead of the city manager having the final word, because we have a 60-day process in place that we could ask that it come, whatever the request is, it can come to city council for your approval. So that way you'll know specifically who's asking and what are, what are their intentions in the location.
I, I move that we amend that.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, when someone calls the question, another member must second the motion, and then the mayor would ask for a vote on closing the debate, two-thirds must vote in favor of closing debate. If the motion to call passes, the mayor will put the question on the motion before the council.
Right.
According to Robert.
So, so there wasn't, there wasn't, there wasn't even a second, so.
There wasn't a second.
Yeah.
Fine.
So, but, so, but can I, just possibly make a, a motion to amend, to amend it, to say that? And then instead of, instead of the manager having that.
What the hell did we vote on?
We did, we did an illegal vote, basically what happened.
Thank you. Now how do we withdraw that?
Oh, we don't.
It is, we don't have to go back, because the vote was, never should have been taken, so it can be stricken from the record.
Okay. And now you have amendments that you want to do to this.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I can, if I can make a suggestion, if there's going to be multiple amendments, then maybe it'd just be better to bring it back to a different backing, because.
I do. I certainly would, with some amendments done to it. Say a bit. A little bit more, you know, defined of what they're saying.
That's fine, I can, I can certainly bring it back to the council at the next.
Sorry.
Yes?
I motion that we table this until Colin has such time to provide us with a modification to this resolution.
Support.
We already had a support motion for the other to vote on.
Right, but a tabling motion supersedes that. Because, well, you make a motion and it gets support, so you can begin discussion. If at the results of their discussion, we table it.
Just clear all those notes, just throw them away and we'll start right in the middle of all of this, okay? Okay, that one has been tabled. And so now we have what, discussions that date to discuss, to fill vacancy in precinct four, which I thought we already did, but, go ahead, Cheryl, please.
Do we have applicants?
Yes. What was the deadline again?
I thought.
May 1st.
May 1st.
Right.
And I believe we have seven applicants, both have pulled applications, only one.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, okay.
That's going to be a lot.
One has been.
Why I say.
Yeah, that's like a special meeting.
So we wanted to give you an update and give you an opportunity to determine if you wanted to schedule a special meeting to interview.
Well, if it's that, currently we have one submitted.
Yes.
Okay. I would say that if we have more than three, that we probably need a special meeting. But if we have only three, I think we could, we could do it here.
Okay.
They have to be in by the 1st of May and our next meeting is the.
Fourth of May.
Fourth of May, so we'll know by then, we can make our decision at that point in time.
Yeah.
Whether we need another one or not.
Star Wars Day, do Star Wars Day.
Okay, yes, Cheryl.
Will we be getting names of the applicants beforehand?
Yeah.
I think, I think that is, they've probably given the packet to the meeting, right, the applications, right?
Might, might as well, because they're going to come out about the same time.
Yeah.
Do they have to be in by the 1st, ours has to be out by the 3rd, so, or whatever. You can do that, right? Can you do that? Am I got too many days in there?
Well, Friday's the 1st, so if they have Friday till 4 o'clock, your meeting's going to be on.
Boy. Is that the weekend you're going to work? Okay, so you could probably get those out.
It's just a little election around that corner, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
The, the council should keep in mind, we need to have a councilman seated no later than June 6th, actually the 5th, because there's 31 days in May. Yeah, so it would have to be done by the second meeting in April.
Not May.
May.
No, because it has to, excuse me, the, it'll have to be the first meeting in, first meeting in May, no, because it would have to be done no later than May 5th, because that's 60 days.
No, no.
No, you just said June.
March, you just said June.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, June.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be done.
First meeting in June, June 2nd.
Boy, this has sure been a complicated council.
Feels like a Monday, doesn't it?
What you're doing is, you're going to decide at the next meeting whether or not you're going to have a special meeting.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yep. The applications have to be in by the 1st, the council meeting is on the 4th.
I know, right?
Okay.
We'll get them, we'll get them somehow, some way.
Okay.
Okay. Future, excuse me, future agenda items? Yes?
Austin Avenue Initiative.
Excellent.
Anything else? Anything else?
Applications.
Applications. Okay. Nothing more? Uh, motion to excuse, everybody's here. Okay.
Oh, the, the, the resolution appreciation, are we, do we have to wait for them to get something from...
Oh, yeah, Bill's resolution appreciation for Bill.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I have, uh, kind of pending, but...
Yeah, we're pending, but if, well, someone could check to see if he's...
I did get an update under, maybe a couple weeks.
I'll check, I'll check with...
We'll see what they wanna do.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sooner we can do that, the better.
All right. Um...
It is health.
Discussion and approval of Resolution twenty fifteen dash eleven. Resolution for authorization of the request from the Albion Building Authority to be submitted to the Albion Trust for funding of remodeling of a building owned by the Albion Building Authority.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions? There were some words that needed to be updated and stuff, am I correct?
Essentially what happened, we had previously done the, well, the resolution is new with the, the, uh, the Albion Trust wanted, uh, basically an opinion that the funds were gonna be used for public purpose. And, um, I had submitted something to them, um, referencing the food hub. Um, I really just, the only things that I changed, I resubmitted it to Cheryl, I believe, uh, Cheryl and Peggy Cent resubmitted it to the trust, and it just references that it's, um, for the ABA building of which the food hub is a portion.
Okay, all right. Oh, right, yeah.
So it's not specifically solely directed at the food hub, but directed at
The building.
The building itself, which encompasses, uh, food hub and farmer's market and other things.
It would also include the apartments upstairs?
Yes.
Is that right? That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes. Um, I've got a American Legion with the Memorial Day, uh, which is set for ten AM. I'm not gonna be here.
Neither will I.
Mayor Proten's not gonna be here, so if he could pass this to the old mayor from, uh, old Garrett Brown, in charge of the parade on Memorial Day.
Well, I, I think traditionally, with, it'd be a seniority thing, wouldn't it?
It is.
We would, I, I would really like to be there, but I sadly will be in, uh, Paris visiting my daughter, getting packed and home, so...
Life is tough.
Yeah, sadly. I, I like, I like the Memorial Day Parade, it's one of the, it's one of the highlights of our year, so...
One other thing, uh, for the forty-ninth annual Festival of the Forks, they need to know how many council people will be in the parade.
I'll be there.
Everyone?
Yeah. Including, I can, bet we can speak for the new fourth person, fourth precinct person, making a requirement for their employment.
All right, uh, citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes proper to corners required. Are there any citizens' comments? Please come forward with your name and your address, please.
Marcus Ware, three eleven West Ass Street, Albion, Michigan. President, friends, and family of Albion. Uh, this first thing, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Mayor Domingo, the council, Dr. Mitchell, Mr. Domingo, for the letter of appreciation. We appreciate that. And, uh, a couple things concerning the baskets that we purchased and had set up in, uh, Holland Park. There's a twenty-five-year guarantee on those baskets. Uh, the paperwork should already be in the city's hands, 'cause they had to be delivered by semi when we ordered them, and they delivered them out to the old city building across from Guardian.
Oh, okay.
So invoices and stuff should already be in the city's hands. And then there was a question about the sign and the maintenance of the sign, uh, Tillman Canilla's Courts. Is the city gonna take care of that, or we never really...
Well, I would imagine, because now they named those courts at that, am I correct?
Official, yeah.
So I would imagine the city probably will be liable for that.
Okay.
So, you know...
Okay. And, Councilman Reed? Do you have any special plans for the court?
Do I have any special plans for the...
For the basketball courts?
Uh, I think that's up to our new rec. director, uh, Larry Williams.
That's up to him. I'm eager as far as to resurfacing other courts. The courts were uh, set up on the old tennis court.
Yeah.
And they already had a lot of cracks in the surface.
Yeah.
And over the years, they've been pat, patting it, ran out. So is there any plans to resurface the courts or anything like that?
I guess now it is. It wasn't before.
And the reason why I say that, you know, well, no matter what we do, Holland Park will always be known for basketball. That was the makings of Holland Park. The first court was up on Cass Street across from the Dunkin's house, way back in the day. It was one, all of a sudden, it was black top and two basketball hoops. Holland Park started from there, not to mention the black school was there. But that's what the park is known for. You know, that's why I brought that up, you know, so you got a little special attention to that.
I, I will say, I'll put it on my list, yes.
And then, you know, I have one other question to present to, uh, the city, really. Has it ever been a chance to build, build some type of community center in Albion?
I know it's been talked about.
It's been F O C.
Well, it's...
It's in the Recreation Master Plan, however, we've never identified the funding in order to accomplish this to date.
Okay, you know, the reason why I said that, uh, when we started out, if we committed ourselves to the project of funding the baskets up there, we didn't have a dime. And I told the guys, I say, "Well, I believe in Albion." Two weeks' time, we raised over eight thousand dollars, and we only touched a very minute section of the city. So I believe if we turn this into some type of citywide project, you know, maybe the city spearheading it, then different organizations, NAACP or whatever, maybe we can come together and get the funding. I mean, I think that's something that's been needed in the city. I mean, when we wanna do something, we have to get with the schools. We have to use their gym, pay them, or whatever. But if we had a city community center, a lot of that stuff would be under one umbrella, not just recreation. A number of things could go on in that building, year around. Something to think about is something I think that's been way overdue. I'm in my sixties. I'm not gonna tell you sixty what, but, and it's not, I mean, we don't have... I mean, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, something. I mean, especially now that we don't have a high school, and the kids from the ninth through the twelfth will be going to outside schools, and if they participate in sports, and you got a coach that's been in a town for years, he been watching the kids in that city. Our kids only have from the ninth through the twelfth to showcase their skills. Whereas they can keep their skills honed if we have some type of community center here, where if they don't make the team there, they might be recognized in our community center and can get a fast shot at college or something. Our kids are definitely at a disadvantage now, ninth through the twelfth graders, having to go to these outside schools. We all know a coach is gonna use what he's been watching. If I've been watching you from the first grade all the way up to the ninth, you got first shot in my team, unless a superstar come along, Michael Jordan. It's something for us to think about. And that's all I have to say. I'm gonna hold you to that.
That's the question. Where'd you get your shirt?
Uh, I can purchase it for you guys. I'm taking orders, but, uh, I, I might not wanna reveal my source yet, 'cause, you know, this might be a spearhead to starting the funding for this community center, 'cause I do believe in Albion. I do. I've been to a lot of places. I was in the service, I've been overseas, different countries, and nothing like Albion. I had more fun here than I had anywhere.
There you go.
Growing up. And after I got grown, Austin Avenue, you know? But it's something for us to think about.
Right.
So can we maybe get together on that?
I would think the city manager would be more than glad to sit down and talk about that.
Definitely.
I'll be in touch.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just add, sir, that, um, during our interviews for the Build Albion Fellows, we had one young man who basically said exactly the same thing, that he's gonna work, uh, he'll probably try to connect, I'll try to connect you with him, uh, about building said community center, so...
Okay.
So, that, you're not the only one in this town who's thinking about it. So thank you very much for speaking up.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If that is all, I don't see any more comments from the citizens, I'll ask for a new German.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Thank you all very much.